Shane, if you'd like to join me up here please. I hope you didn't memorize that because I'll probably stop. Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I, Shane Michael Jenkins, do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I swear to protect, to safeguard and preserve life, and property against fire and other perils.
And to maintain proficiency, and professionalism in fire service. I recognize that the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust, and I will accept so long as I am true to the ethics of the fire service and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Thank you so much.
So, you want to tell us who you have with you this evening?
I have my husband Brian and my daughter Riley.
And?
And my dad.
Can you go back down there for one more second? Sorry about that.
Pretend you're putting a badge on, that's what he wants you to get.
There you go.
What's her name?
Riley.
Y'all come up.
If you want to look at me then I'll do you.
One, two, three. One, two.
Here comes Randy.
Okay, Shane, if you'd like to join me up here please. I hope you didn't memorize that because I'll probably stop. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Shane Michael Jenkins, do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I swear to protect, to safeguard and preserve life, health, and property against fire and other perils. And to maintain a proficiency and professionalism in fire service. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust that I swear to protect that I swear to protect and I accept so long as I am true to the ethics of the fire service and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Thank you so much.
So, you want to tell us who you have with you this evening?
I have my husband Brian and my daughter Riley.
And?
And my dad.
Can you go back down there for one more second? Sorry about that.
Pretend you're putting a badge on, that's what he wants you to get.
There you go.
What's her name?
Riley.
Y'all come up.
One, two, three. One, two.
Over comes Randy.
Okay, Shane, if you'd like to join me up here please. I hope you didn't memorize that because I'll probably stop. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Shane Michael Jenkins, do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I swear to protect, to safeguard and preserve life, health, and property against fire and other perils. And to maintain proficiency and professionalism in fire service. I recognize that the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith and trust and I will accept so long as I am true to the ethics of the fire service and make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So, you want to tell us who you have with you this evening?
I have my husband Brian and my daughter Riley.
And?
And my dad.
Brian, if you'd like to come out.
Riley.
Can you go back down there for one more second? Sorry about that.
There you go. We need copies of that. We're going to get you copies of this. How many copies do you want?
Also tonight, Council, I'd like to recognize in the month of November, the Buchanan Fire Department, volunteer fire department, accepted three new applicants. One is a returning member who had moved out of the area and came back and rejoined the organization. One is a brand-new member who has no training and won't be starting our mentor program. And one is a contributing membership who is going into the medical field and is going to be an EMT. So, I would like for those, there's two out of the three here tonight. Emma, would you come up please? Emma Rieger. You know, we always talk about, you know, it's hard to find people to volunteer for organizations anymore. These are both young people who are looking to improve themselves in a great organization. And we look forward to helping them and them helping us and shoving them down through emergency services so they know when life's a light on the street. It's an adventure and stick with us. We have a lot of good people in our organization to train and to spend time with. And this is a very exciting time at the Buchanan Fire Department to be able to not only get career members but to bring in the volunteers and look forward to expanding and improving the services we provide. So, thank you all.
We'll take a two-minute recess to allow folks who may want to leave to go ahead and leave and then we'll go through with the rest of our meeting.
And to maintain a proficiency.
And professionalism in fire service.
And professionalism in fire service.
I recognize that, I recognize the badge.
I recognize the badge.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
And I accept so long as I am true.
And I accept so long as I am true.
To the ethics of the fire service.
To the ethics of the fire service.
And make these promises.
And make these promises.
So solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
So solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Congratulations. Okay, we'll get copies of that. You want to tell us who you have here with you?
My girlfriend Sarah's gonna do my penning.
Okay.
Also have pretty much a whole second row there. My Aunt Lynn, my mom Kathy, my niece Madison, my brother's fiance Pam, and my brother Luke, and then my uncle Bill.
All right, everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll give this to you. You're good at that.
We practiced.
Pretend one. Pretend one more time, will you?
And that's good for me.
Yep.
Okay, you can choose however, who all you want up here for your picture. Everybody come up.
Whoever wants to come up.
Go ahead.
All right. One, two, three.
Right here.
One, two, three.
There are any copies of that, so.
Yeah, we're gonna get you copies of this.
How many copies do you want?
Also tonight, council, I'd like to recognize in the month of November, the Buchanan Fire Department, volunteer fire department accepted three new applicants. One is a returning member who had moved out of the area and came back and rejoined the organization. One is a brand-new member who has no training and won't be starting our mentor program. And one is a contributing membership who is going into the medical field and is going to be an EMT. So I would like for those, there's two out of the three here tonight. Emma, would you come up, please? Emma Rieger. And Zachary Conner. You know, we always talk about, you know, it's hard to find people to volunteer for organizations anymore. These are both young people who are looking to improve themselves in a great organization. And we look forward to helping them and them helping us and shoving them down through emergency services so they know when life's a light on the street. You know, it's an adventure and stick with us. We have a lot of good people in our organization to train and to spend time with. And this is a very exciting time at the Buchanan Fire Department to be able to not only get career members but to bring in the volunteers and look forward to expanding and improving the services we provide. So, thank you all.
We'll take a two-minute recess to allow folks who may want to leave to go ahead and leave, and then we'll go through with the rest of our meeting. Come ahead and reconvene. Rodney, you ready? Go ahead and hit the report bottom. Oh, okay, oh, okay. Rodney, you ready? Okay. All right. JB just asked if he could be moved up in order in the department reports, and I said that was fine, so he can go and greet the families of our new firefighters. So Chief Kimball, you are up for your report.
Thank you all very much for allowing me to move up. In your packet is the monthly and year-to-date. That is through October. We had 108 responses in October. You can go through that file. There's. We had four fires. I mean, it just breaks it all down in the percentages like a typical. Year-to-date, we were at 1,200 responses so far. Beginning November, so we still have December to go. The Christmas parade, we've had a lot of phone calls. I just want to clarify, it is tomorrow night. Lineup starts 5:15, 5:30. It's, the fire department's putting on, it's very calm, collective, just show up. The only thing we ask is please no political agendas, you know, and our Santa will be there to provide for the children. I talked to Santa last night. Santa chose that he would rather be at the firehouse than at Jawbone. He just, that was his choice. I left it to him. I wanted him to feel comfortable with groups of people. So we're gonna end the parade at the fire station. Santa will exit, go in his normal chair, children can come in and visit him. So we're prepared for that. The Fire Department Christmas dinner is following Saturday on the 11th, and I'd like to, we're gonna invite any male on council to show up. The dinner starts at 6:00 at the fire station. Santa will be there, too, also at 7:00. So if any of you all that would like to attend, come on by. Very good food. We deep-fried turkeys. We've grown a smoked turkey this year, so it's a good time. We spend all day peeling potatoes and doing camaraderie at the firehouse. So anytime you want to stop in, come see us. Planning a meeting next week with Mr. Sanders, and we're gonna start the emergency planning process for the band competition. That's gonna be a big event. I spoke with our local Office of Emergency Management, Terry Wallace. We just want to start with the foundation of the local people to begin with, and then we'll expand out once we figure out how much it will be involved. Chief Gregory and myself have pre-planned some discussions on some things that we want to discuss, and, you know, it's all part of the planning process, so. I'm gonna give Teresa DeMar, the Accreditation Review Committee. I'm gonna try to have about a one-hour meeting before the end of the year, just to go over our services provided and a couple of documents that have to be approved in January. We did get our fire district straightened up so we can, as soon as the fire association meeting is in December, the agreements will be written up. The map, I'll meet with Terry Joe Benton next week. That'll be all adjusted, and we can move on with that. So that's been a three-year process. So finally, some relief, and we can move on.
So I have a great effort, it's how long you keep at.
Yep. So if you don't have any questions, I hope to see you all tomorrow night. Stop by and see Santa at the firehouse. We will, our group will be there serving hot chocolate. So stop by and don't forget the Christmas dinner, everybody's welcome.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you a lot, JB.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing, mayor. I forgot. Down at the bottom agenda, we talked about this, the volunteer fire department is writing a grant through Region 7 for some safety equipment. We use the Buchanan city account. It won't cost the city any money. If we do receive the grant, it's for some turnout gear, some ventilation system repairs in the fire station for exhaust and for air packs. So Region 7, we're almost complete with it. We just want to make sure it's okay that we use the city's account through FEMA to do that. So I didn't know if that was something we needed to vote on.
Well, council, I'm gonna, without objection, I'm gonna move F2 to the table. And you've heard the chief's request, it does not, it's the city is, this is not a, no financial burden is on the hook from the city. This is just a formality that they use our account information for the grant. I'd entertain a motion that we accept or that we help with this. We have a motion by Pam. We have a second. We'll give it to Jack since he's delayed on the phone. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of assisting Buchanan Fire Department with the grant with the use of our account, please signify by saying aye.
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 Like sign opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, chief.
All right. Public Works Director, here you are. We have paving.
Yes.
It says the words.
Yes, believe it or not. I've been working with the, or removing the concrete down the public safety complex. We're about to finish our project up, or at least the removal. We will probably install some parking curb blocks around the perimeter, just as a precaution through winter, and then next spring anticipate the start of some curbing. And again, that project will have to be in our next year's budget for completion of that, and I'd like to see us get back on the facade down there at the fire station, too. Been also helping with some of the paving repairs around town. Trying to get that knocked out. I do know that the plant here locally is gonna be open all next week, so we'll be patching holes again Monday. So anybody that has, you know, a favorite pothole, let us know. We have a list, and again, when our sweepers out or the guys are out, we make a list of those holes, and we get several, several work orders through I-Works and here at City Hall. But if anyone is not sure if they're gonna get that hole patched, please call in, let us know. Again, as the mayor mentioned, the paving contractor's working on the Lincoln Street, and he gave me an update this evening and said that if everything goes well, he's hoping to finish that up tomorrow. And then with the plan of starting Spring Street next week. And, you know, hopefully we can get Spring Street knocked down. We continue with, the street part continues to work on North Spring Street and Willard Way, and we will, even after the paving, we want to do the entrance to Spring Street like we did on South Spring. We want to concrete the entrances to the street so that we can maintain that crosswalk a little better. Concrete doesn't sag out like the blacktop does and cause issues for wheelchairs and things. So as we do these streets, we're trying to do, concrete those approaches so that we can maintain our crosswalks a little better.
Are those crosswalks city's responsibility, the one like, on Spring Street?
The one crossing the city's street? Yes, enough. I hate to be that way, but the actual state right-of-way goes building front to building front.
So it would be the corners, yeah.
And so, but, when it comes down to it, we're responsible for maintaining the sidewalks. But just like when they did the project of the curb ramps, that was a state project. So it's real, on these state routes, it's real blurry as far as the, you know, actually whose ownership and whose responsibility, but we do maintain all the sidewalks and lane strip. We're again working on paving repairs, and we hope to start work on the installation of the greenhouse starting next week. Take a couple of weeks to get that greenhouse, our own greenhouse, in at our new facility on Mudville. Nothing new in water or sewer and waste department, just we hired a new waste collection truck driver, Amos Tenny, he's doing very well. Engineering.
How has Jay had this much time to do all this being on the roof?
Well.
Yeah.
Well, the builder's been on the roof for three solid weeks.
Tenterton Booster Station, Potestic continues to work on the preliminary layout and upgrade. The risk assessment, Kell and Jay's completed about 75% of the review, and that's due on or before December 10th. The FEMA generator grant number two, contractor will start installation of electrical conduct and construction of the generator pad at the water treatment plant this week, weather preventing. Generator grant one, FEMA's nearly complete with their review of the change of scope of floor budget revision three. I hope to have the update within the next two weeks. Gateway West, Phase 3 construction, still waiting. Hasn't heard back from that MOU with Fuller Rotary Church about the property swap. And West Virginia Solar Array Project, construction and installation, the solar array begins about two, or began about two and a half weeks ago, and the perimeter fence has been installed, and the solar panel is installed in this, which stands at this time. Of course, City Hall roof replacements, 90% complete. They have some metalwork caps and things to finish up, so Jay will be back on the roof there in another week or so.
He likes it up there.
I know. I know, and he likes to call people from up there. Just, I know that.
We could build him a little hut up there if he wants to stay.
We could call it the Crows' Nest.
I've always wanted a couple on top of City Hall, so.
Vicksburg Utility Development, he's waiting on execution of the right-of-way agreements for that. The Gibson Library remediation, there's a meeting with Library Board of Trustees and the Mills Group scheduled for December 12th.
What are we remediating?
At the library?
Yeah.
He's talking about the upgrades to the library facility.
The ventilation.
Well, there's electrical component, plumbing component, ADA issues, so it's a remodeling project, actually.
Is there a condition going on, or is it just?
No, it's existing building windows. It's just about all of the, all of the infrastructure there needs some work or some attention, so that's what they're working with. He's been helping Randy with Wamsby and CD, and talking with some of the bleacher companies and things. So that wraps up Jay's report.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Jerry? Thank you for keeping on our favor.
Well, just like I said, I'm really glad that he's came through this far, at this point.
Yeah.
And again, the blacktop plants will close, I mean, I know, you know.
Yeah.
That's gonna happen, so. But hopefully we get it wrapped up.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's a lot, looking a lot better now than it did last week.
Yeah.
I agree. I just have a question. What's going on? Like you mentioned the public safety complex, how that's being filed out, are there, what's going there?
There, Bryson developed a layout of that, what's it been, three, four years ago? CJ, we had a committee together to look at the facade of the public safety complex and to redesign with the parking lot, soften the edges of that with greenscape. So that's what we're doing. We had that equipment rented to do the demo work on these structures. So while we had that piece of equipment, it was much quicker to use that to demo that. So we just went ahead and took care of the demo work, and then like I said, we'll put it in budget next year. We'll go ahead and start curbs in the spring. Put it in budget next year to do the complete redesign of the lot and hopefully the facade of the public safety complex.
So adding like greens.
Yeah, be trees, trees and flower beds, and just softening that whole edge up. But it ties right in with Jawbone, but.
Big difference just seeing that out. It felt like it's a whole open area.
Absolutely, yes. I was a little, I was a little apprehensive at first when Bryson first said that about taking that wall down. And then after we took it down and I started seeing it dressed up, I get it.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it does, it ties it right into Jawbone, and it's gonna be beautiful.
In the original plan, the Florida Street entrance ramp and the parking lot was done away, but we still.
That's, that, again, I want to have those discussions. We had a committee, if you remember.
Yeah.
On that, and that's something I want to take up with the mayor.
Get everyone involved.
If he wants to go back with, yes, wants to do that because.
We need to check, we need to include the occupants of that building as well. Police are fired.
They were part of the discussion. Matt and JB were part of the committee at the time.
Yeah. On the original complete design of the parking lot.
Yes, yes.
It's been vannied, so.
Because we've, I mean, there was even, you know, we've even come up with the component of upgrading electrical structures in the lot to allow for overflow, just like we do now with the carnival, having three-phase power over there, period-style lighting.
Water.
Yes, water in the bays for vendors, so, you know, that was all part of that original plan. It's just bringing it back in, and like I said, if there wants to be changes, I know we couldn't nail down, really nail down the facade. If you remember, where we kind of got stuck was, you know, we're looking to paint, we're looking to take down all the metal and do something different there, and.
So I think we just didn't determine a big bang for the buck over, for the functional use of the property to start replacing all the metal and, but it's paint, you know.
Opportune, opportune time with, like I said, with 2023 fastly approaching and with the Madison Street.
Industry construction season.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. What's different, you know?
Well, I think, I mean, from my vantage point, the metal could stay, but if we, if we colored it up and we put, you know, red across the fire department side and blue across the police department side, I think that would be, that would, that would improve the property immensely just from the street alone, just by adding a red and a blue strip.
You could do that in two days.
Yeah.
Yeah, doing that and, you know, with just the lot itself, doing that, what we've done so far, adding the green space and lighting. Lighting in that lot is terrible.
Yeah.
So adding lighting would help tremendously, so. But yeah, more to come on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Finance Director, Ann Beryl Jenkins.
Good evening. Going to get your balances for November 30th for general funds accounts. General fund money market and checking, 954,005, 46, and the CD remains at 86,000. Historic landmark saving, $3,026. Fire truck savings, we closed that out. The mayor and I closed on the fire truck financing on the 30th of November, so that was closed out and used as a down payment towards the fire truck. The fire truck cost, just as a reminder, was 544,882. The payments are gonna be $4,790 a month for 10 years. And just as another reminder, we renew that financing every year as required by code.
What's the rate?
2.5. Good rates.
Yes.
He must have just borrowed all right.
Yeah, Dave wants to go.
Yeah, I'll take a little bit of that.
Stalker Youth Centers capital campaign remains at 440,000, that's including the pledge. Coal tax, 56,155. Municipal stabilization, 914,000. Flood control, 78,000. Consolidated Public Works, 190,000. This is at the end of November. Cemetery CD remains the same at 234,000. Sales tax, 1,901,000. And the American Rescue Plan remains the same at 1,193,000. Jerry mentioned the roof, like he said, City Hall hours are now open regular. There's no partial close to public days, we're open. Now they're finished with all the abatement up there. I want to get back to the roof here in a minute, but in the meantime, I want to tell you about your revenues and expenditures for November. Your revenues for November were 372,000. Your expenditures were 236,000. I think I have that back. Let me look at something real quick.
No, that sounds good. No, that sounds good. We, we brought in more than we spent.
No, I definitely have that wrong. Yeah, cause I was like, no, no, no. Expenditures were six hundred eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, your, your negative was two hundred and thirty-six thousand. So, um, with that being said, we have a lot of expenditures that were larger. Upper County Sheriff's Department property purchase, those tax sale properties, ninety-three hundred dollars. Void company for the rental of the excavator, uh, fifty-six hundred. Tri-State roofing, this is a partial payment on the City Hall's roof, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine. Uniform outfitters jackets and, uh, flashlights for Vips, two thousand nine hundred forty-four. Citizens Bank, that's that thirty-eight thousand, four ninety-six that was contributed to the fire truck financing. Lowe's Christmas decorations, two thousand five hundred twenty. Central Supply, concrete for Spring Street, twenty-nine thousand, three thirteen. RDR Energy Resources, concrete for Spring Street Project, fifty-six hundred dollars. Eli's Lawn Care for mowing city lots from October the fourth to November the fourth, fifteen hundred dollars. Jolens International sells injectors and sensors for the Stalker Youth Center bus, one thousand eight hundred twenty-nine. And then CSX Transportation FEMA Grant Number One, generator engineering services, thirty-two hundred. And we contributed, uh, to Consolidated Public Works as per the budget. We talked about that last year, sixty thousand, uh, towards, um, parks, that's not flowers, and, um, thirty-five thousand for mowing. And then, uh, street projects, uh, just in total, the expenses for the month of November was eighty-two thousand dollars. Okay, I want to just touch back on the roof real quick. This'll be something, I'm, I'm just basically giving you a heads up on as, I almost said Bob the Builder. As the city engineer was on top of our roof with them while they were replacing the roof. There's two sections to this roof. There's an older section, and then there's actually this section here that was, uh, added on in nineteen ninety-eight. And when he was up there, and the roofing company and Jay both saw lots of wear and tear, and there's actually holes developing in that section too. So he, uh, and I think Jerry also highly recommends that that part of the roof should be a change order, and that we will come back to council about that roof to add that as another replacement on this section of the roof. That'll be at the next meeting, and Jay will be here to give you more information, but we do, we did get an estimate today on that, and it's eighty-seven thousand dollars.
What's the contract for currently?
Uh, this part was a hundred, we, we estimated a hundred and twenty, but it's gonna come in a little less. It's coming in at a hundred and fourteen.
So two hundred thousand for a roof, huh?
Yeah. Not cheap.
What about that?
But it's been, you know, we haven't done much to, well, actually, we've not done much to this side of the roof for years. It's been neglected for a long time. Uh, it, it was, you, if you were in here in the evenings, sometimes if the wind was blowing, you'd hear popping in here, and you're like, what's going on? But it's, it's.
This will, this change order, that's the whole roof, there's no other section.
That'd be the whole roof.
All right.
We better not find another roof.
Another section.
Our own business.
That's all I know.
Um, you want to go ahead and do the, uh, resolution while you're up?
Well, yes, in part. I'm gonna explain that too. So, uh, the resolution, we, I do need the approval for the sound system if you want to do that, but, um, I won't need to do the budget revision at this time. And the reason I say that is because as I got to looking and knowing that this roof is coming up, uh, to place, we actually have enough funds in the, uh, City Hall Capital Project where we had done some revisions for the foundation work and the roof, which is coming in a little bit less. So there's enough funds in there right now to cover the sound system if you choose to let us purchase that. The sound system came in at a quote of, oh, I also want to mention one more thing. We, we also put in revision for security cameras, and they have not been here to take care of that either. So we do have a cushion in there right now. But the, also the door on the front of City Hall that we would thought, thought was gonna come in at thousands of dollars, that they'd have to replace that whole thing because it's older. Wilson Glass actually came in and he was able to change out the parts that weren't available anymore and modify that door, and so the door only cost like seven hundred dollars to fix instead of thousands, so I, I appreciated that and thanking for it, and, uh, so we saved a little money there too. Uh, the quote for the sound system came in at fourteen thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. And I, I've mentioned before that, um, the county had an allocation towards this city of CARES funds for three thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars, and we are hoping to use that, a portion of that towards it. Now, Carrie checked with, um, the state to make sure that this would be allowable, and they gave the kind of, well, you know, it's up to you, it's up to your legal counsel to interpret that, but we, they have purchased items like that, items like that's gone through before. We just have to be aware if the state decides they're not gonna approve the whole bills on the city, which we have to pay it and wait for reimbursement anyway. So just so you know that, it's not likely to happen, but just in case it does, I want you to be aware of that.
Okay.
And Randy can tell you more about the sound system.
What this, yeah, we, we have two bids, one from, uh, Charleston Farm, one from Parksburg Farm, and I like this, I like the approach that the United Sound from Parksburg has taken. They're recommending that we utilize gooseneck microphones. There would be one between each, each, you know, every other council person. Um, it'll pick up the, the audio much better. Uh, there'll be a gooseneck on, on the outer tables, and then we'll have a handheld, just a wireless microphone at the main podium, but we're getting a gooseneck to mount there so that we can take that off and use it in the audience if we needed to. It'll also provide a couple of speakers in the back of the room, um, which will pick up our conversation better for folks whenever we do have a full house in here. It does tie in with the software we're using for the go-to-meeting platforms. That's the biggest plus, and that's the biggest reason that the CARES funds, I think, would be utilized, because it allows us, uh, uh, you know, our goal is to get past this, I can't hear very well on the phone when I called in, or I can't hear very well, uh, when I use the go-to-meeting platform, because the room will be mic'd really, really well. It includes all of the support system, the amplifiers, the, the, the soundboard, the switcher, also includes a video camera. Uh, we'll add a second television, uh, one over there, so, and, and the video camera will not only pick up this part of it, but the video camera will then pick up the, the part up there, so the speakers, it'll be able, will be able to preset it, move it around, pick up different areas of the room, so that people that who, who want to participate in the go-to-meeting programs will feel engaged. They'll see what's going on inside council chambers, and they'll hear what's going on inside council chambers without passing these two little round microphones around and so on. These are very highly sensitive, uh, gooseneck microphones, and it's wireless, which I thought was another important element, so we didn't have wires running across the room in every di, every different direction that we would have some sort of concern over, safety issues. So it's all, you know, it's all very, uh, high-end, uh, equipment. Um, EV is the main theme across the equipment, Crown amps, you know, anyone that works in sound can take a look at this, it's all good, high-quality stuff. And United Sound is a very reputable firm out of Parksburg that does many, many jobs in this area. Uh, high school work, you know, they, they put a lot of these systems in all over the place, so. And there'll be the technicians that'll come on site, and they'll actually install everything. So our guys, Jerry, may have to have a power drop done here or there, but it's gonna be very minor assistance from, uh, the city's workforce. It's gonna be all on these technicians who will install the system for us and make sure we have it operating. Yeah, it's very much needed.
Council, you'll see on the agenda, it technically says approval of the, uh, resolution for a budget revision, but it is listed on specifically the agenda, City Hall Sound System. I would recommend that we go ahead and approve the sound system expenditure and then wait for the, uh, budget, the, the formal budget revision at next meeting, if Ambie has that ready for us. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to that effect? We have a motion by CJ, a second by Sheila. Is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing the need for none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Likes unopposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Uh, Tom signaled that he does not have a report, a formal report under the Department and Board Reports, so we'll go down to the, um, uh, correspondence and information. There's two items, your First Energy Foundation Grant, five thousand dollar donation Colonial Theater. Uh, that happened, uh, two weeks ago, um, in front of Colonial Theater, and then we've got letters, uh, from Common Sales and Service, updated shipment delay dates, uh, reason for delays, and this goes back to the FEMA, uh, mitigation project, emergency power grants, which Jay has touched on in previous meetings. Uh, we do not have only one section of the minutes. We have, uh, we, we have two of them. We have eleven-four and eleven-fifteen. So if we're considering the consent agenda, I would, uh, entertain a motion that we accept it as presented, considering we have the minutes of the eleven-four, the minutes of the eleven-fifteen, the building and wiring permits, and the payment of our bills. The motion by Pam, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Thomas. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Likes unopposed? Motion carries. We have dispensed with the two items underneath Strategic Issues for Discussion and/or Vote, which takes us down to Council Comments and Announcements. We'll start to the left here with Pam.
Ambie, since we didn't use all the money that I'd asked for for Christmas decorations, can there be lights put on the poles going west? Just, just the poles?
Not this year.
Not this year? Okay.
No, we, we are, uh, I can't commit any more Christmas decorations, that's the problem. And we, uh, well, Ambie, the wreaths that I ordered at Lowe's, I just got a refund because they weren't able to get them this year for us, but, uh.
Those, those new ones aren't what they'll handle the wreaths, are they?
No, no, the new poles, we don't put, you, we'll wrap them with garland. We've got, we've got enough garland to do the East Main poles. That's, you know, we used to do the East Main too, so I, I like the looks of the garland and a red bow at the top of the, the garland on the light poles. But to answer your question, this year we don't have time, and I would also go back to on that, uh, the rest of that money, I would suggest we look at doing the flag holders and the flags for West Main. That's, since that's our main, or one of our main entrances into town, I think it would be nice to have those banners, those holiday banners up out there too.
Are those poles gonna be able to hold like the flower things?
No, they are not, they are not structural poles. They're just all decorative poles. The ones on Main Street are steel, and these are aluminum.
Okay.
Yes, they will take, we went, we upgraded to the, you know, we upgraded to the, uh, the high-quality aluminum pole, the heavier aluminum pole, so that we could put the banners on, but that's all we can do on those ones.
Anything else?
Yeah.
CJ?
At Consolidated Public Works meeting this week, Dixie Green, uh, was on the call, and we talked about, uh, some broad things, but, uh, specifics on replacing some trees in Jawbone Park, the ones that are stressed or diseased down there, and then she sent me a list of species that looked like oak trees are probably gonna be the best, uh, solution for that, so I think she's gonna get a quote or something together and present it to council to get those trees in and try to get them in in the spring. And then Jay sent me a message, an email today that our Create Buchanan's proposal to landscape the acreage to the right of the westbound entrance ramp onto thirty-three at Route twenty, uh, with the four different species of shrubs in like circular groups, so it'd be ferseythias, the burning bush, two other names I'm not gonna butcher, but, the, uh, they're different colors and they're, they're loaded the ground, or at least not trees. Uh, so, you know, our goal was to get this kind of initiated, get it started, but I wanted to kind of, you know, partner or bring this with the city and see if we can, uh, figure out a way to make this all happen next year somehow, order the trees or somehow. So trying to spruce the place up.
Yeah. Anything else? Jack?
Uh, I'm good.
Okay. Jay, David Thomas?
No comments.
Okay. Sheila?
I have no comments. Have a nice evening.
Randy?
Uh, we did have, uh, the, along with success, uh, headway with the Wamsby event last few weeks. Uh, we had a meeting with, uh, Brian Ingelson, who was the person in Palm Springs who ran the event there. Uh, Ambie and I joined him for a, uh, a Zoom call along, uh, on, on Friday, along with Lee Winter, who has been, uh, recruiting bands. So we had a really good one-hour conversation with him, and we, we learned a lot. Um, he gave us, uh, an outline of the successes they had, the cooperation they had with their city as well, and he also gave us an outline of the things to watch out for, so we don't repeat any mistakes that they made too, which was tremendous. Uh, so that, that I think was very, very helpful. A, as, uh, Jerry mentioned, his report, we've been meeting now with, uh, providers of bleacher comp, from bleacher companies representatives to see about adding more bleachers into the facilities to handle the, uh, estimated audiences that we'll have, so we're getting quotes and so forth on that. Uh, we have a new assistant that's been helping us. The, uh, the Wamsby nonprofit side did hire Haley Compher, who is working with us just a few hours a week, just to make a lot of these calls and to gather the data and to put it all together to send back to the committee, and she's been doing a good job. So a lot of good headway with the Wamsby event. We have about forty-two bands. Uh, another one from Honduras entered today. Uh, these are all letters of interest, and we're working, there's about four groups who are very, very much, uh, interested in coming in for site business, maybe five groups. Uh, so they're applying for their visas now, so that would be three to four to five people from that particular group that would come to Buchanan and spend a few days. So once we get more information on that, we'll tie in the CBB, the Chamber, the Create Buchanan groups, uh, the, the mayor, everybody, make sure we make them feel welcome, show them the tab, and help them plan, you know, for this event, so, uh, a lot is happening. Oh, it looks good, so that's my report on Wamsby, man. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, I'd like to remind council that we have a brief executive session relative to a property matter. Uh, I don't believe any decisions will be made this evening, but I would ask that council, uh, remain here, uh, for that session, just so we can, uh, talk about it a little bit and look at the, look at the map provided. Okay, um, thank you, everybody, for a, a good, a good, efficient meeting.
Record break.
Hope, hope everybody, uh, enjoys the Christmas festivities coming up, starting with the Christmas parade tomorrow night, uh, downtown, so at seven fifty-four, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Same. Move.